Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call this session of the Orange County Schools Board to session tonight. I need a motion for us to enter closed session for the reasons so stated on the agenda. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, let's move to closed session.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call this session of the Orange County Schools Board to session tonight. I need a motion for us to enter closed session for the reasons so stated on the agenda. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, let's move to closed session.
We will start with our public charge and I thank you all for being here and I'm sorry you had to wait as we had a longer session, but we will start with our public charge. Orange County, excuse me, the Orange County Board of Education pledges to its citizens to conduct its business in a courteous and productive manner, showing respect for fellow board members, staff and citizens. The board asks its citizens to conduct themselves with the same courtesy toward both school personnel and each other. A moment of silence will be observed before each meeting. In addition to the moment of silence, the board will recite the pledge of allegiance. The board asks that you check your cell phones and other electronic devices to be certain that they are either turned off or on vibrate to avoid interruption of the meeting. So we will start now with our pledge of allegiance, if you will stand please.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you, and now we will take a moment and observe a moment of silence. Okay, we have some recognitions tonight, two recognitions, and we will start with Ms. Brimmer or Mr. Coeick, I'm not sure who's the, oh, and Ms. Wood, as we introduce new National Board certified teachers and renewals.
Good evening, everyone. I'm here with Rhonda Wood, I'm Jeff Coeick from Human Resources. For around thirty years, National Board certification has been a milestone achievement for teachers that positively impacts their students, the district and themselves. National Board certification is a challenging reflective process that emphasizes best strategies for professional practice and how to positively impact learning for all students. In order to achieve National Board certification, a teacher must complete four components, assemble a portfolio of their teaching and pass a test. What are the benefits? In our latest measure, the percentage of National Board certified teachers who exceed growth was twice the rate of non-National Board certified teachers who exceed growth in Orange County. Additionally, the state of North Carolina provides an ongoing 12% raise to National Board certified teachers as long as they remain board certified and in a classroom. I want to take this moment to give special thanks to Rhonda Wood and Connie Brimmer Caltz, our dynamic duo who supports our National Board candidates pretty much as soon as they start entering OCS at whatever level. In Orange County schools, we currently have seventy-six National Board certified teachers, which includes the addition of four National Board certified teachers that came in to Orange County School this year, as well as nine others who have achieved this status and still with us today. We are so proud of all of our National Board certified teachers and we would like to recognize the following OCS national, the following OCS teachers who have either renewed or achieved their certifications this year. If any of the teachers are here, please stand as your name is called and Rhonda will read off the list.
Good evening. It's so exciting to be here. So for the past three years, I have watched the growth of our National Board certified teachers and I am so excited tonight to celebrate our new candidates and our recent renewals. Andromeda Crowell from Orange High School, Rachel Harper from Eflin Cheeks, Susan Brooks from River Park, Alexis Kegel from Central Elementary and Heather Johnson from AL Standback. These folks all renewed their boards this year. And our new candidates, Lauren, Laura Eisenhower from Cedar Ridge, Christina Clark from Cedar Ridge, Melinda Barnhart from Cedar Ridge, Ashley Walker from River Park, Tracy Thomas from Healsboro, Lauren Warren from River Park, Amber Potter from New Hope, Anthony Folden from Grady Brown and Nicole Franz from Grady Brown. Congratulations.
Thank you both for that and a big congratulations to those teachers. It's a lot of hard work, it's a lot of hours and we appreciate you, Ms. Wood and Connie Caltz, Connie Brimmer Caltz, for your hard work in doing and helping those teachers along because it is a, it is a major accomplishment. So congratulations to all of those teachers and everybody in HR who has participated in helping them. Now, we have our winter sports, our National High School Association, state championship recognitions, and I think Mr. Newman, our Director of Athletics, is gonna come forward with some folks that I know.
Good evening and thanks for having us. The, I am Louis Newman, I'm your, honored to be your District Athletic Director as of January 1 and it's been fantastic. One of our favorite parts of this job is to have this opportunity to be able to present the accomplishments of our athletes. So I hope to do a whole lot more of it because that's my favorite part of the job. And tonight, I am first of all excited about just really congratulating the entire Orange High School swim team as they had a heck of a season. In addition to this, in addition to that, I'd also like to congratulate and honor the 400 relay team as they won the state championship for North Carolina High School Athletics Association. In addition to that, Luke Roman won also the 200 free and the 500 free freestyle swim as well and was named a 3A most outstanding swimmer of the year. So we certainly all appreciate Orange High School's incredible school and athletes for representing all of us in such a manner. And I believe Coach Guy might have a few things to say about his team.
Thank you guys for having us and I appreciate the, being able to be recognized for the team. I'd like to thank our school administrator, Principal Johnson, our athletic director, Jason Knapp, who helps support us in being able to deliver a quality product for our kids at the school. One thing I just wanted to mention in addition to that we're super proud of, so Luke, this is his second time being recognized before the board. Last year, he won an individual state championship as well in the 500 free and this year, he was able to win two individual events, the 500 and the 200, and then he was part of the relay team. So a relay team is normally four swimmers, so we're missing two of them. One of them's in a pool right now swimming, getting ready for a meet this weekend and you know, swimmers are dedicated, consistent folks and so that's what one of them doing, the other one's at an appointment. So we have Noah Jones and Luke Roman who are part of that relay team and so it was a great season. We've won the regions for girl, for guys and our girls got third in the region this year. They won conferences, the men's team for the tournament and for the, for the regular season. season. Super proud of them. These guys are also scholar athletes for the state, and so these guys carry a high GPA, they're nationally recognized for a scholarship program, as well as what, recognized in North Carolina. So you know, if you want to swim for Orange, you gotta be smart, too, so we're gonna make sure we take care of the students there, too. Thank you guys for having us, and we appreciate your support with the athletic program.
Well, before you sit down, I'd like to say one thing. I'd like to thank the gabs who have done this for, I'm not even gonna say how many years, but they have put a lot of time and effort into working with these guys and gals, and it has paid off, and we really appreciate your hard work as well. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. We got into this, our son was a junior, and he needed a coach, and so we stepped up, and six years later, we're still here, but he's not, so.
They stepped up, and here they are.
We enjoy the kids, so, thank you guys very much.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
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 Thank you for keeping the love and swimming.
Yeah.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, approved. And Mr. Richmond, do we have any public comments tonight?
Yes, ma'am, we have three.
Okay.
We will now hear public comments. Speakers will be called in the order in which they signed up. Each speaker will have three minutes. Yielding time to other speakers is not permitted. If a speaker has written materials they like, they would like to share, please hand them to our board clerk, Franklin McCune, and he will distribute them to the board. The purpose of public comment is for the board to hear from members of the public, not to engage in back and forth discussions. Per our policy, board members will not respond to speakers during, during the public comment session. The board greatly values public feedback and welcomes all comments, regardless of viewpoint. However, please be reminded that children are often present at these meetings, and that our public comment policy prohibit, prohibits profanity, vulgarity, and personal abuse of any person. We ask that all comments be civil, respectful, and free of personal attacks. Any person who violates our public comment period or otherwise exceeds the bounds of order and decorum will be given a warning. Continued violations may result in the speaker being ruled out of order, at which point we will move on to the next speaker. Our first speaker tonight is Casey Collins.
Hello. Sorry. Good evening, Orange County School Board members. My name is Casey Collins, and I'm the parent of a first grader at Central Elementary School. I also have a three-year-old child enrolled in the preschool academy run by Orange County. I'm a member of the Central Elementary PTO, as well as the Community Schools Advisory Board there. In an effort to provide a bit of context, when my daughter was entering kindergarten, I entered her into local school lotteries in the spirit of giving ourselves options. She ended up getting a spot at HES, which prompted me to further investigate how traditional calendar, select schools, and charter schools function within our public school system. Ultimately, I found it all to be profoundly inequitable. In the end, we chose Central. We were governed by the idea that being in community with a racially and socio-economically diverse population could be a positive experience and enrich our family's collective education beyond academic learning. I'm pleased to report I was right. Central has become an important part of our life, and I have become a passionate advocate for our school community. I'm here tonight to address some public comments I saw from your last meeting, in which a group of HES parents requested that the bond money be spent on a middle school that would primarily serve their select school community. I noticed that these comments made reference to the benefit of a year-round schedule for disadvantaged communities and students with low test scores, of which Central and several other schools in the district have disproportionate numbers of. If in fact the year-round model is so effective, and there's evidence to support this, why then could we not put the whole district on the same schedule, so that everyone could benefit from its many advantages? Having the district calendar be consistent for all schools eliminates so many of the inequities that plague our school system. It could streamline administration and transportation resources, it could help regulate food insecurity and childcare, and improve teacher retention and academic engagement. I understand the arguments against a district-wide year-round calendar relate largely to athletic programs, which another HES parent spoke to effectively. She described how her experience in Wake County allowed her to both attend a year-round school and participate in sports all the way through high school. It can be done. This argument also begs the question, is the priority of the school district academic development or athletic competition? I understand that this bond money is not enough to repair everything that needs repairing in our district, not even close. But in thinking about how best to allocate these funds, I would like to ask, what district-wide changes could we make to maximize this investment for the whole community? I'm asking this board to consider putting all the Orange County schools on the same year-round calendar. This move is both efficient and equitable, and would make far better use of our collective resources. If for some reason this idea is met with opposition, I would like for this board to clearly explain that position, and to identify the impediments that prohibit this step toward a better school district for every student. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Next speaker, please excuse me if I mispronounce your name, is Luda Stessel.
My name is Luda Stessel, and I am a parent of two kids at Central Elementary School. However, we did not land at that school by choice. Despite several years of attempts with the lottery, we were not able to select ourselves into a community blessed by a year-round calendar. Now, don't get me wrong, I have learned to love our school, the Central Elementary teachers and staff are amazing. But I sympathize with the parents of HES that spoke at the last board meeting about their experiences. I, too, want all the benefits of a year-round calendar. However, I believe that everyone in the district deserves to benefit, not just a select few. Therefore, I am here to urge the board to use the bond funds in a way that benefits the most kids in our county. If we believe that a year-round academic calendar is particularly effective at mitigating learning loss for low-income students, then let's offer that to the kids that need it most. Four out of seven, four out of seven elementary schools in our county are these consistently underperforming targeted support and improvement schools. They include Central, New Hope, River Park, and Grady Brown Elementarys. In their most recent school report cards, as published by the North Carolina Department of Public Instruction, are D, C, C, and C. Economically disadvantaged groups attend these schools in high proportions, with 70% at Central and New Hope, 35% at River Park, and 60% at Grady Brown. This is compared with 18% at Hillsborough Elementary. The taxes from these economically disadvantaged and low-performing communities will be funding the $125 million bond. It is irresponsible to even consider using this bond to fund a new K-8 school that maintains attendance based on a select lottery, which would inevitably continue the unjust segregation of people and of resources. I urge the board to use the bond money in the most equitable, creative, and responsible way to promote the academic excellence of the entire district. Don't just use these funds to provide a new building for a select few, but rather, please use them to construct spaces that would provide transformational and positive academic experiences for as many kids and families living in this county as possible. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
And the final speaker for tonight is Rachel Royce.
I have a statement that I wanted to read, it's very short, that I saw in the news that the USDA has cut $1 billion in food aid, and that in North Carolina, the Local Food for Schools Cooperative Agreement Program has been cut $19 million. And so I wanted, I have a question for you, I wanted to know, how will that affect the school lunch program in our, in our county? And what are you going to do about it? Thank you.
Thank you.
That concludes our public comment session.
Okay, thank you all for being here and speaking. We need to now approve our consent agenda. Do I have a motion to approve? So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay, that is approved as well. And we move into our work session. The Superintendent's Recommended Local Operating Budget. Ms. Rath.
Good evening, Chair Purcell, Vice Chair Richmond, Board Members, Superintendent, Staff, and the public. Thank you for the opportunity tonight to present to you the fiscal year 2026 Superintendent's Recommended Budget. Going to start with some key budget dates. Tonight, we are presenting the Superintendent's Recommended Budget. On April the 7th, there will be a public hearing where there will be an opportunity for public input to be shared with the board regarding this. April the 7th will also be when the board hopefully approves and accepts the local operating budget. We will then submit that to the county commissioners by April the 14th. During the month of May, our county commissioners will be holding budget public hearings, where they will also be hearing from the public and also discussing the funding that they will be providing not only to the two school systems, but all of the county departments that are supported by them. And then in June, they will have a resolution with an intent to adopt, and we will know what our funding will be from the county for the upcoming academic year. I want to start by highlighting wonderful things that are happening in our school district. First of all, per the 23-24 end-of-grade testing, 10 of our 13 schools earned a school performance grade of C or higher, and 12 of the 13 schools met or exceeded growth, both of which are well above the state averages. Additionally, we have had some highlights at our individual schools. By no means does this represent all of them, but I wanted to take an opportunity to elevate a few of these to you and to our public. Jason Johnson, the principal at Orange High School, was named the 25 North Central Principal of the Year. Dr. Meredith Mayer, our principal at New Hope Elementary, was recognized for closing the achievement gap between subgroups of students, and is currently ranked in the top 10 in the state for closing the achievement gap. We had two art teachers, Sarah Brown Schumacher at Eflin Cheeks, as well as Amanda Agwaju at Gravelly Hill Middle School, who received the, in North Carolina Art Education Association Educators of the Year Award. And we had a student at Eflin Cheeks who actually had a piece of art displayed in the North Carolina General Assembly Youth Art Exhibit. A few other things to elevate tonight. Our district continues to keep summer programs a priority in light of the state of our federal and state funding cuts by continuing to offer exceptional opportunities for our students. Some example of these include our Summer Careers Academy, a partnership with Chapel Hill Carboro City Schools and the Home Builders Association to offer on-the-job training opportunities for our students. CTE Student Interns provides unpaid intern opportunities within Orange County schools, as well as other businesses. We have multilingual high school bridge programs, which is a summer camp opportunity specifically for our multilingual learners, allowing our students to build confidence and maintain language skills during the summer break. Middle and high school transition programs that provide opportunities for rising 6th and 9th graders to become familiar with the new schools in smaller settings that they will be attending in the fall. Our tutoring programs at Gateway and within our Title I schools continue to support student success and mastery of fundamental skills promoting confidence. And thanks to the support of this board and the diligent work of our administration, we continue to have a balanced budget and maintain a fund balance. We were able to right-size budgets this year to continue supporting initiatives proven to impact student achievement by reallocating over $700,000, and we have seen just how challenging this has become for some of our counterparts, near and far. Our budget priorities continue to be to recruit and retain high-quality staff, student proficiency and growth, and to allocate resources to best meet the needs of our student and staff. Let's talk about how we build the Orange County schools' budget and those things that we must consider. First, students determine our funding. North Carolina school districts are funded based upon the number of students attending a school. For fiscal year 25-26, it is anticipated that our funding will be based on 6,908 students. State law requires that public schools also provide their local per pupil funding, which for this year is $5,666 for every student that is domiciled in Orange County Schools District but attends a charter school. As you can see, that number currently is at 1,125. Reflected here is a five-year trend of student demographics within Orange County schools. Overall, we've seen growth in our black and brown populations by a little over 11%, and a decline in our white population by almost 15% since 2020. Going to now shift over to my Human Resources counterpart, who's going to also take the opportunity to talk with you a little bit more about how we allot in building our budget.
Thank you, Rhonda. Good evening again, everyone. So as the slide shows, our funding is based primarily on our ADM, our Average Daily Membership. So it's projected out a year ahead. So for example, in September, in August and September of 2024, this year, the first 20 days, or the second 20 days, which is roughly mid-September to mid-October, the higher or best number of that count sets our ADM for the next school year, for the 25-26 school year. That's statewide, and Orange County schools will initially allot schools and staff based on this formula, although we do track changes as, as we notice them over, over the period of time until the next school year begins. When we are looking of how to staff schools, there are certain mandatory ratios that we have to keep in mind, as you can see from the slide, in kindergarten, first, second, and third grade. There is some leeway in that. A particular class can potentially go over these numbers by up to three students, but the district average throughout the entire grade must be at these levels for us to meet statutory requirements. This slide shows- This slide shows the OCS and state ratios of students per class for all grade levels. The first three in blue is repeated from the slide before. And as you can see, as we go from grades four through grade 12, the state ratio, which says, which allot's us one teacher for 24 students, the Orange County School District ratio is actually higher. As you can see at the, from the numbers at the bottom, it looks like we are in the positive, about 29 teachers, because we have higher class sizes than the state allot's for in grades four through 12. Hold that thought. As we move to the, as we move to the next slide, you will see this chart here, and the first row is simply repeating the information from the slide before. The state ratio gives us 327 core teachers to fill, but because of the way Orange County schools allot, we actually only use 298 for those positions. What I wanted to bring to your attention, for example, in the next row, the middle row, where it's talking about program enhancements or electives or specialist teachers, you'll notice there's a formula, one-to-one, one teacher to 191 students in K through 5, based on Average Daily Membership. So the state, in essence, allot's Orange County schools 15.9 positions. Underneath that, you will note what clearly looks like an unfunded state mandate. In grade 6 through 12, there are no state allotments. So when you look at the FAR column, the district ratio, you will see, for example, in elementary, OCS this year, right now, is currently allotting 28 positions in elementary school, far more than the 15.9 that the state gives us for every grade level. And you can see the numbers in that, in that second row, third column, which says that we have 77.5 total program enhancement positions. So the sort of savings in allotments that we may have had, because we have higher class sizes in grades four through 12, well, we're, in a sense, you might say we are over-allotted. Now, please keep in mind, every district that I know of is over-allotted from the state allotments, right? We need to do this because we have student needs and priorities that you all set for us as the board that we need to carry through in our mission. Sometimes the state allot's us by money amounts rather than positions. The AIG teachers, for example, are one example of that. The bottom line for that is that, according to the, we have a certain amount of money, the $425,000, I think that's written there, we are actually paying like double that amount, okay, to support AIG needs over what the state will allot us. As we move on to the next slide, this is one of the easiest columns to, and rows, actually I should say, one of the easiest rows to follow. We have a principal in each school of our 13 schools. Assistant principals, the state also gives us a formula. If we add those up based on our ADM, that would give us 71 months of employment, or roughly six and a half assistant principal positions for the district at 11 months of employment. As you can see from the second row, third column under the district ratio, obviously we have more assistant principals than what the state allows us for us to manage the students. The next slide talks about instructional support positions. You can see the distinction in row one about the math-science computer position per district. That's what the state allot's us, one. We have nine for the district for the instructional support positions, okay? Which you can see the description in, you know, the math coaches, the literacy coaches, the coordinators. Again, the state only allot's us in that second row, 16.8 positions based on our ADM, but we currently have, working in there, 39 people in those positions to fill those needs. This next, and I believe this is the last in the set, but we have school health personnel, defined as social workers, school counselors, school psychologists. I do want to point out that there is a mistake that should say 17 positions and not 11 positions in that first row in the second column under the state ratio. But as you can see from the third column under the district ratio in that first row, we have a total of 43 total school health positions, which even over the 17 positions that should be there is overdouble what is the state allot's us. And the school nurse positions, you can see there as well. So, and we have agreement with the county health department about nurses, so that's a little bit of a different category. We're not paying for all those out of our local funds. So if you look at a summary, this next slide provides sort of a summary of all our allotments. The OCS allotment is in that middle column. The state allotments are in the FAR column, that we are funding over 100 more positions than the state is allotting us for, and that's where most of our local dollars are going. This was just another way to sort of view the data. If this was sort of a full, as you can see, each of the different types of teachers and categories here, and we added principals and assistant principals, this is what OCS is currently funding for. If we were only to fund what the state gave us, you can see the discrepancies in each of those boxes about what it would be. Please keep in mind, it's for the school health personnel. It should say 17, not 11. That box would be a little bit bigger, but the point is still made. What would that mean then, if we only allotted by the state? You can see from this slide what some of those effects could be at the school. Every school district has to balance the priorities in the allotting and the funding, allotting and funding, as Rhonda will talk about more in her presentation. But let me turn it briefly back over to Ms. Rath.
All right, thank you. So another piece that we have to consider when we're looking at developing our budget is we have to mitigate any funding caps. And our biggest obstacle surrounding that is our multilingual learner and our exceptional children populations, because those fundings are capped. State resources provided to school districts in both of these areas is capped. 13% of our ADM is where we're capped for our exceptional children, and 10.6% of our ADM is where we're capped for our multilingual learner. As a result, our student-to-teacher ratios continue to increase, and the need for teachers to be split amongst several schools is becoming the norm. Our staff continue to offer the best possible services to our students while we work to keep a balanced budget with fewer and fewer dollars. And Mr. Coe Week is going to talk a little bit more about that.
One thing I'm not going to talk too much about is the complicated formula for how they figure out the ratios and for how we get allotted ELL teachers. I think it's safe to say, looking at the different numbers, the state allot's us in dollar amounts, 866,000, based on our needs in the schools and the, you know, the decisions that we've made in how to support our students. We are paying, we are spending almost double that amount to support our ELL teachers. And that, of course, is above and beyond what the state is giving us. Additionally, just another, to see what our allotments look like for EC general teachers, you'll see in the second column, it talks about the state maximum caseloads. So in elementary school, one teacher could have a maximum caseload of 35 students. In the secondary schools, it would be 1 to 50. The state would allot us based on those numbers, 16 positions for the district. As you can see from the fourth column, the OCS average caseloads for our current, this year, our EC general teachers, those caseloads are 1 to 17 at the elementary school level, 1 to 20, and 1 to 25 at the secondary level. So again, we have 34 positions, which is overdouble what the state is allotting to work with our EC students. Okay, again, a similar sort of graphic. This is what we're currently staffing. If we just went by the state model, you could see what would happen to our services. All right, at this point, my last tag-in. Thank you, Ms. Rath.
Thank you. I appreciate the collaboration that finance does have with the Human Resources Department in total and Mr. Coe Week, because as you can see, they are a very important component when we are developing a budget to present to you. Another thing that we have to think about when we're developing our budget is making sure that we are maximizing our funding sources. Right now, our funding is almost split 50-50 between state and local resources. Approximately 6% of our budget does come from federal resources, and we also have a small portion that comes from restricted resources, which is basically funds that we receive that are restricted for a specific purpose, and they cannot be utilized in any other manner. An example of this would be NC pre-K. Those funding, that fund is considered restricted. This does not include capital. We're not even talking about that in discussion. I'll let my counterpart take care of that later on. But when you look at our operating budget, this is how our resources are currently coming to Orange County schools. Also want to take an opportunity to talk about how we spend them. Roughly 79% of our budget supports salaries and benefits, and 6% of it is actually what we have to pass through to charter schools. State law requires, as I stated earlier, that any student that is domiciled in the Orange County School District, that if they attend a charter school, we have to give that per pupil funding to that charter school. That's about 6% of our total budget. Five, roughly 15% goes to our other purchase services and supplies and materials. Purchase services are basically going to be utilities are the primary component of that. And then supplies and materials are just what they say they are. Those are those consumable items that are, we are using our funds for. Wanted to take this a little bit further and share with you. Of that 79% that supports our salaries and wages, 80% of that is specifically at the school level. 14% of that is basically what we call district-wide or our auxiliary or operations. That's going to be your transportation. That is going to be your maintenance. Those are those departments that are basically spread across the entire district and touch the entire district. And 6% is for central office. And that does include some of our district-level coaches and facilitators, but those are people that are not tied specifically to a school. Next, when we're looking at building our budget, we often have to think about those state mandates. And Mr. Coe Week referred to one just a minute ago. And we want our teachers to get the best increases from the General Assembly in salary and compensation. We want that for all of our staff. Right now, we really don't know what the General Assembly is going to come back with in regards to salary increases for our staff for next fiscal year. We have an idea of our benefits based upon trends, and we know that they are going to be increasing significantly. But we are taking kind of the middle of the road for planning, and we are planning based upon a 3% increase in salaries for all of our staff. This also includes roughly a $500 to $1,000 increase in our health insurance premiums, and about a 7% increase in our retirement premiums for the upcoming fiscal year. So in order for us to continue operations exactly as we're structured right now, factoring in the things that we've talked about and a 3% salary increase, we would need an additional $1.8 million from our county commissioners. Next, I want to take an opportunity to talk about our expansion initiatives. We want to continue to advocate for our staff, and we know that you do as well. That's why we bring before you these expansion requests for consideration to take to the commissioners to request funding for the fiscal year 26 academic year. We would like to request an increase to increase our teachers' local supplement. We also would like to request an increase for our classified supplements. We want to increase that supplement for our lowest-paid classified staff, currently only receiving 7%. We also would like to advocate and request for a bus driver hourly pay increase. I'm going to talk about each of these in greater detail, but we would like to propose and ask for funding to increase our bus driver scale to align with Chapel Hill Carboro City Schools. First, let's talk about our local certified supplements. As you can see from the graph that is depicted here, Orange County Schools is lagging behind in our local supplement in all of the tiers. We would like to correct that and hopefully utilize this as a way to recruit and retain staff that we already have here. Right now, our classified certified, our certified supplements are paid in the following bands, as you can see here on the screen. It's from 12% up to 18%. And you can also see here the number of staff, as well as that percentage of the staff that they are. When we were looking at this information, we looked at several ideas. And the one that we would like to recommend is an additional 5% supplement to each of the tiers for our certified staff. This would allow us to be more in line with our surrounding districts that we are competing with and outpace a few, particularly in those middle years, by increasing the 12 by 5%, the 14, et cetera, all the way up to the 18, increasing those by 5%. In order to do that, we would need an additional $1.6 million in funding from the commissioners to substantiate that. As you can see here, 3% would get us closer to Chapel Hill, which is our biggest competitor right now, where 5% would allow us to actually be there and outpace some of them in each of those tiers. Next, I would like to talk about our classified supplements. These are our unlicensed staff in the district who are crucial to the success of our students as well. Currently, the classified population, most of them receive a 7% in local supplement. That's approximately 284 of our staff. We have coordinators who receive 9% and directors who receive 13%. We want to focus on those classified employees who currently fall in that 7% band. This would include teacher assistants, school bookkeepers, school receptionists, office support, custodians, technicians, and child nutrition. It does not incorporate bus drivers, because we're going to talk about them separately. So we would like to request a recommendation for an additional 2% for our classified staff that are currently receiving 7, to increase them to a 9% local supplement. That would equate to roughly an additional $375,000 that we would need from our commissioners. That would allow us to be able to impact over 280 employees and actually provide them an annual average increase of 718, realizing that it is a percentage based upon your salary. For some, it's going to be higher. For some, it's going to be lower. But on average, we're looking at 718. Next, let's talk about bus driver pay. We also took the opportunity to look at districts around us to take a look at how we were measuring up in regards to what we were paying our bus drivers. As you can see, in Orange County schools, to be able to get to $20 an hour, you have to have five years of experience or greater. Whereas in to have five years of experience or greater, whereas in Chapel Hill or even Wake County, you only need no experience till one year, and in Durham, you need four years of experience. We would like to recommend that we increase our bus driver pay scale to align with Chapel Hill Carboro City Schools, which you can see here is the fourth column in the small graph in the right-hand top. So that would be, everybody would start on a step one at $21 an hour and then increase from there. In order to do that, we would need an additional $305,000 from our commissioners to be able to implement that pay scale. So in summary, our continuation budget that we need to continue operations exactly as we are right now is $1.8 million. I do want to point out that on this slide, the projected enrollment is incorrect at the top. 68, 62 is a number that we were looking at very early in the process. I apologize that it did not get updated, but that should be 6,909. That is an important number when we start talking about per pupil. So when you look at the number of students that we're projected to have plus our charter schools, and then factoring out those students who attend Orange County Schools that are not districted here and do not pay tuition, this is a benefit that we offer staff who work in our schools, who may live in surrounding counties, that they can actually have their students attend in the county that they're teaching in. That would give us a number for our per pupil that is roughly $230 that we would need on our current per pupil increase to be able to fund that. Our expansion initiatives listed here that we talked about in total is $2.2 million. That would give us a total budget shortfall of a little over $4 million in order to implement everything that we have presented here as a recommendation. That is a $230 per pupil increase just for our continuation. An expansion is roughly $279 per pupil that we would need. So you're talking about roughly a $500 increase per student in Orange County Schools that we would need, or $4 million. Wanted to take this opportunity to also share a look at what our per pupil funding history has been from the county commissioners since the 1920 academic year. As you can see here, we've had some years that were as low as $15. We had some that were zero, and we've had some that were as high as $538. To close out our discussion tonight, I want to take this opportunity to take a quick look at our local operating fund balance. As you can see, in 2020, we had roughly $6.1 million. During the COVID years, we were able to build that to $6.6 million, and then had to spend some of those funds and actually got us down to $4.3 million is where we ended our fiscal year last year. Right now, we are projecting that our fund balance for this year is going to be around $4.4 million. The orange line that you see there is industry standard, that's roughly 10% to 11% of our local operating budget, that we would like to see us have in our fund balance. Keeping in mind that this is cash flow, and a lot of times, it can be extremely beneficial when we are in those years where our federal funds don't drop until December or January. And also, I want to point out that our local payroll roughly is $2 million a month. I would feel much more comfortable with a number around $5.5 million, and I hope, that's my goal, is for us to continue to work towards that. I thank you for the opportunity to present this recommendation to you this evening, and now I will take any questions that you may have.
Thank you very much, Ms. Rath. This is very comprehensive and very telling of what we need. Does anyone have questions?
Well, first, before I get to anything, I want to say that, you know, I've been on the board for a little while now, and so I've been in a number of these presentations, and they just keep getting better and better. So thank you. I feel like the narrative and the explanation here was really thoughtful. The presentation overall was really great. I have a couple of minor-like presentation suggestions for when we bring it forward to the county commissioners. One is, when we're talking about the allotments, and I'm really glad we do that, and the very first slide where it talks about the state ratio and the OCS ratio, I feel like we should say like the word allotment in there. Like, it's not, it's not the state average. You know what I mean? Like, I think, I think if somebody just saw the slide without the voiceover, it could read as like, "And the state average is 1 to 24 students," or whatever, and it's not. Like, everyone is doing what we're doing, which is saying like, "Oh, you're not going to give us any art or music or language teachers? We'll take some of those then." So that's a tiny thing. And I'm not sure that the trend by race, like the demographics makes as much, like, makes a narrative point as much as would like free and reduced price lunch increases or multilingual learners or EC, some of these other trends that we're experiencing. I think they would, it would like explain a little bit more about the needs of our students and how they're growing and changing. So a couple of considerations there. I wanted a clarification. So is, in the continuation budget, it says non-personnel increase. Is that like supplies, material, is that to account for inflation?
Yes.
Okay, it's like a 3% inflationary to account for the cost of everything that we buy?
That is correct. And also, you know, utilities on average tend to increase roughly between 2% and 3% as well as, as you know, all the things that we have seen significant increases in, yes, that accounts for that.
Okay, awesome. And then, I just, I mean, I really appreciate, I know it is, you know, a real ask, and I just really agree with these priorities of what we're asking for, and just wanted to say that. And just for additional context, I saw that Alamance County Schools, which is one of the neighboring districts that is not currently ahead of us right now, is, in their budget proposes increasing teacher supplements, using $1.75 million to increase their teacher supplements, and increasing their classified supplements by $1.1 million. So, you know, they're even with us or below us by like 1% on the teacher supplements and are right next door. So I think that is also an important factor in this. I don't know whether they'll get it, but they're certainly asking for it. And then, the county policy on the fund balance?
I'm speaking.
That was much lower. I can't remember what the latest on that is, but they, they had sort of, I think it was like 5% or something like that, that they wanted to see our fund balance around a number like 5 or 5.5%? Was that it?
5.5%.
5.5.
A little over $2 million.
Yep. And, and like, if you go way past before COVID, when we were up near 6, it was close, it was like 3, you know, things like that in the past, right? And I understand why we would be much more comfortable with a bigger number. Does the county understand why we would feel much more comfortable if we were around 10, 11, 12% fund balance?
We are working very hard to articulate that and help them understand why, you know, we want a fund balance that is more in alignment with that, as well as more in alignment with them.
Great. I think it is standard to have a little bit more, and given the current volatility and uncertainty in the funding environment in general, I think it's good that we are trying to keep a robust fund balance. That's it. Thank you.
Ms. Dole?
Just a couple of comments, and thank you, Ms. Rath. I also found this a really effective presentation in lots of ways, from the presentation of the data and how allotments work. One point I want to make, just because when we talked about this in student achievement, it caught my attention. As, as a parent who's raised three kids in Orange County Schools, the district ratio for the upper grades, you know, the 1 and 1 to 27 or 1 to 32, that doesn't mean that's like a typical class size. That really hasn't been my kids' experience, and you explained to me, Madam Chair, that there's certain classes where that happens that kind of skews the numbers, classes where it makes sense. So, parents out there, it's not that your kids are in a 10th grade math class with 32 students at all. So that was one thing I just wanted to point out for general understanding, since it had caught my attention. I really like the focus on the three, the three areas for expansion. I think they're the right items, the teacher local supplement increase, the classified supplement increase in the bus driver. And I think your team has been really effective at presenting how tight everyone's trying to be, and then the savings that have been garnered by a lot of work department by department. And also, just wanting to know, you know, we don't have the benefit of, you know, the special district tax in Chapel Hill. We also don't have the benefit of the, like, a foundation. I know Durham Public Schools is using their foundation to increase bus driver pay, and we don't have either of those funding mechanisms. And so, you know, I think it's a really important argument that our bus driver pay should align with our sister district whose transportation infrastructure we actually support and maintain. So again, I think these are the right, the right requests for expansion, and I'm excited to see the projected fund balance as well. And again, how, how stable we overall are, yes, we've gone up and down some, but our overall trend with our fund balance has a lot of stability, and I'm kind of proud of that. So, thank you.
Any other questions? Ms. Padilla?
I just want to say thank you and your team for putting this together. It looks beautiful, and I was able to understand it, so that's great. The only thing I thought about when I was here, going over it again, is can we maybe next year also abdicate for teachers to have a budget for their classroom? I don't think it's right for teachers to pay out of their pocket for any class material, so it would be great to abdicate for that. But I love the fact that we're abdicating for everyone here. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Atherton?
I first want to echo what many board members have said. I really appreciate the focus and the data behind it, to especially show the county commissioners, especially as we see the teacher pool not being as available as we have in the past. So I think it's very important to show our support for our teachers and investment in it. On the fund balance, I know we've had discussions with the county commissioners, and I believe they are opening to, to that. That is not, that's their minimum. It's never been their max. And I know in one conversation was that, I think Chapel Hill requested 15% or 20%. So I know they are very open to changing that to whatever we feel comfortable with, and knowing that once we change it, it should be attainable, right? Because if we tell them, hey, it's, we want it 10, but we're years away from getting that, that's just going to penalize us. But I, I think it's a great goal to do as well. One thing that I do want to share publicly here, because a lot of people aren't in our committee meetings where this has been developed, these aren't the only things all of us would like to see, but these are the most important that we want to go to the commissioners with. There are many things that I know many of us would like to see, invest, and STEM, and others, but we realize that, you know, these are the important things right now that we should be bubbling to the top. But thank y'all so much, and I also just wanted to thank y'all for using actual Orange County pitchers and not stock pitchers. I think that's wonderful to see and share with our community, all of our, all of our staff and students and activities that they're doing throughout the school. Thank y'all.
Ms. Houser?
Yeah. I'll just add my thanks. I love the matching outfits, and, and the presentation was truly fantastic, and thank you, really great work. I wondered if you had an answer to Ms. Roy's question about the USDA funding, and, and I don't want to put you on the spot, but if there's anything we know about the risk, because I'm getting that question all the time, and I don't know if that's something you want to talk about.
I, I don't have an answer, but we will get one.
Great question. Yeah, okay. I love the way you showed that the state recognizes that, that teaching EC kids and teaching multilanguage learners costs more, but then they cut us short, and they don't give us enough funding for it. And if I read your numbers right, you said that the EC thing was costing us almost $800,000 over and above what the state is giving us, and by estimate, I think it's probably double that for the EC. So it's over $2 million that we're not getting, and I wondered if we should, it's an important point. It's important, because it shows the pressures on our local budget. I'm really impressed that we're funding it, but it's a lot of money that's, that's not funded, that, and, and those populations are growing for us, as you showed beautifully. I agree with Will's point on, oh, I'm sorry, one thing on the, on the school health personnel, and I don't know what to do with this, but every category, every staff person in the school health personnel, except social workers, gets paid for master's degrees. And the state says that, that social workers are, they put them on the teacher's schedule, but everybody else is on a different schedule, and it just troubles me. And I, and I know Wake County is now paying social workers for master's degrees. I don't know if anyone else is. I just don't know. It's a small number of staff. I don't know if it's possible to add that. I'll, we'll see what the public has to say. And I do agree with, with Will that this is not everything, and there's a lot of really important things that are not in this budget, and I wondered if you should mention some of them, you know? Just mention some of them, just so the commissioner, I mean, we're not little things, but there's, you know, big things that, that, that might need some money. And then I have a wonky question, because one of the things that the public is asking is about the bond money and whether it affects our access to per pupil funds. And we know that the budgets, the capital budget is separate than the operating budget, but Orange County tends to fund us at something called 48%. And the 48% includes our operating budget plus the debt service on the bonds. And the question is, is Orange County going to give us, since the voters approved the bonds, will they give us more money to cover those, the bond payments, or are they going to take it out of our 48%? It's a question I think we need to be asking, because that would help. Thank you. Great, great, great work.
Okay, any more comment?
Thank you so much, Ms. Rath and Mr. Coe Week, for a very good presentation. I look forward to getting it to the county commissioners.
Thank you. I appreciate all of your feedback.
Thank you. I do want to give, before we leave, one bit of credit where it needs to, where it needs to go. You commented on the pictures in the slides. Well, I think Mr. Smith here and his team is responsible for making our presentations look good, so I just wanted to steer that credit where, where it deservedly goes.
Thank you very much. We appreciate that. All right, we have our bond update. Mr. Davis, you've been waiting patiently. Thank you.
I'm Frederick Davis, Chief Operation Officer for Orange County Schools, and this evening, we're going to bring you another bond update. Before we begin with introductions and our methodology, I want to just take a quick moment to present something that was shared with the board during planning, the bond program outcomes. It's not on our slide, but just want to read them just to set the tone of why we're here and what our objective is. And so the bond outcomes are to enhance teaching and learning environments, and advance educational outcomes and opportunities for all students, to improve school utilization, and provide students the flexibility of spaces. students the flexibility of spaces necessary for multiple learning styles, update classroom spaces and learning tools to meet today's educational standards, and right-size our portfolio to create operational efficiencies, and investing in the community that attracts and retains residents by providing competitive schools. Just want to make sure that the community understands what this board is tasked to do, and hopefully through this bond program, these outcomes will be maintained. Just to, again, reiterate, the voters of Orange County approved unanimously a bond of 300 million, of which 125 million over the next 10 years was focused here in Orange County Schools. Those projects was a replacement elementary school, improvements to Orange Middle, and then the remaining funding would support additions and comprehensive renovations to support 21st century learning, as well as our life cycle cost of our buildings and facilities. So really, we're unique in that the staff here in Orange County are equipped. Patrick Florence, who is our Director of Construction Capital Planning, has a background in real estate, as well as military project management. Myself is a licensed architect with a real estate background, and I have recently, from a nearby school district, built and designed three schools in four years and successfully implemented a $423 million bond. But we wanted to make sure that we had the subject matter experts. And so, in talking with Dr. Jones, we solicited the subject matter of architects, engineers, and project managers. And so we have with us today Mr. Marcus Thomas with KEI, over 42 years of experience, offices in Charlotte and Richmond. And as you see here, here are the various school districts that they've worked with, with similar bond projects. We also have with us Donna Francis with Clark Nixon, over 100, 105 years of experience. They have nine offices, including Raleigh, and as you see here, here are some of the school districts that they have also worked with. A keynote unbeknownst to us, Ms. Francis is a product of Orange County Schools. And so, we really think it's a unique experience with this architecture engineering team that has helped us come up with the options that you will see shortly. And then we have a project management consultant, Mr. Steve Hess, as you've seen him in some other iterations of our plan, over 37 years of experience, 1.5 billion with a B in delivered projects, 22 master plans, and as you see here, here are the school systems and systems that Mr. Hess has also worked with. And so, as soon as the bond was passed, we started to set out the breadcrumbs to get us to where we want to be, to conversate and collaborate with the county on what will be our first project out of the ground for design and programming in 2026. And so as you see, this timeline brings us to today, where we will provide you additional findings of the work we've done course of the winter, as well as updates coming forward in April after spring break. We plan to use the options that you see here to this evening and portray them in a gallery style, so we can get more community engagement and hear feedback from our stakeholders. And then on May the 5th, after collaborating and hearing comments this evening, we will bring forth a final decision for the board to render, so that we can be in line with the funding that the county has set forth for next fiscal year. And so we're going to talk about our methodology. We've been talking around how we want to create transformational spaces and aligning with our priorities to be excellent and efficient, as well as empowering culture. We had a three-pronged approach, the assessment and prioritization, you'll find that in our report, stakeholder engagement, as well as budgeting and planning, so that we can align our cash flows with the county financing. So quickly, you have this information, so I will not belabor long. However, this is our WOOPR report. We've studied it, and what we want to show is, to our highlighted columns, this shows our enrollment, as well as our capacity over our entire Orange County portfolio for facilities. The highlighted areas are those schools who have a below-efficiency capacity, and what we'd like to see is around an 85% utilization capacity for all of our schools. And as you see with these highlighted, we're below that number. That will make more sense as we go along with our presentation. In the WOOPR report, the phased approach of how we would serve over 300 million-plus in need, the WOOPR report broke it out in phases, phase one being the most critical, and subsequently phase two and phase three over the next 10 to 15 years. We're going to establish that the phase one in our current bond structure and showcase how our options align with the phase one that the WOOPR assessed. And so we're going to recap some of the community engagement that many of you may have been a part of, as well as heard in our last bond update. Here are some of the questions that we asked our stakeholders in our online survey. We had an online survey that ranged from February 4th, 5th, I may be wrong, up until March, around two and a half week process, where we asked community stakeholders, staff members, anyone who had the QR code, things such as the relationship to OCS, household size, importance of programming, how you support transitionist sixth grade. All of this methodology will be utilized in the options that you see before you shortly. So we had over 391 responders. See, you see here from the data that all schools represented, as well as parents, guardians, OCS staff, students, and community members. We also took survey results on the importance of facilities and how we, as a district, were meeting the needs and how these also facility assessments could impact learning. And as you see, many of the stakeholders who engaged in the survey found it important for us to have program options, also found it important that facilities impact student learning. And when the question came before us on renovation versus new, you should see here in the bar chart that many of the students and staff and those who took the survey was very high on renovation. However, when it came to new, an elementary was slightly ahead of new facility. Here's some imagery of the two-day, two opportunities for the community engagement. We had over 25 people show up in total for the community engagement in person, and again, the 300-plus for the online survey. During that community engagement, we had a couple of scenarios and engaging conversations. One was around programming and the importance, and most impactful, as you see here, STEM and STEAM made it to the top of the list, as well as our arts and CTE. That is just something that we just wanted to get an idea of what the community really wanted the needs to be. That will be further flushed out when we start to talk about specific programs, once the option in the project has been selected. We then also utilized a monetary game where we asked the stakeholders to play with 125 million and put into buckets, as you see here, of where they would spend their monies. Again, this is not a representation of how the money will be spent or how the bond projects will be allocated, but wanted to acclimate those who were wondering, what does 125 million do with this particular exercise? And with that, I will turn it over to Mr. Thomas, who will bring some more information around feasibility studies and our options, and then we'll pass it on to Mr. Hess to do some more budget and programming, and then I'll return to have any questions that you may have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Davis, and good afternoon, good evening. It is a pleasure, first of all, let me thank you all for allowing us the opportunity to work with you. Our team has truly enjoyed getting to know the school district and the community, and think that the options that we are going to put forth to you tonight are really, truly going to be transformative for the school district. Before I get started, I just want to acknowledge other folk in the room, particularly Ms. Donna Francis with Clark Nixon, our partner, Mr. Steve Hess with PMC, and also those not in the room, Ms. Lindsay Weber with KEI Architects, and Rebecca Brady, also with Clark Nixon. Those who are not in the room, oddly enough, did all the work on this great presentation that you're going to see, see before you tonight, so special shout-out to them. So, it's important to note that all the recommendations that we are going to put forth to you today are really rooted in the current location of all of your schools. And so this graphic, and I'm going to switch to the next slide to blow it up just a tad bit more, this graphic really illustrates, first, where your current schools are located and the districting lines, districting lines that define them, and to the right of your screen shows how the growth in the community is really trending. So as we can see, we still have a lot of heavy concentration of growth in the core areas, but also heavy concentration of growth to the west, which I think is going to play in one of the options we share with you tonight. And again, just a quick reminder of how we got here. We've had three rounds of exploration and feedback. We came to you March, on February 10th, with three options that included a new K5 at Hillsborough Elementary School. After further investigation, we've came to you last week, well, two weeks ago, on March 10th, with another grouping of recommendations based on new findings, which included a new K5 at the Central Elementary School site, a new K8 at the Orange Middle School site, and a new K5 at the Gravely Hill Middle School site. And tonight, we're going to present to you three refined options that include a new K5 at the Central Elementary School site, a new K8 at the Orange Middle School site, and a new K5 not on the current Gravely Hill Middle School site, but on a county-owned parcel directly adjacent to Gravely Hill, which we will dive into here in a second. So, again, the three options on the screen, an onsite replacement at Central, a greenfield new build adjacent to Gravely Hill, and a new K8 on, at the Orange Middle School site. And then just for your, just as a reminder, the phase one projects, as we get into each option, you will see how each of these is really starting to address the recommendations in the WOOPR study. So let's dive into option number one, the onsite replacement at Central Elementary School. Some of the key considerations for this option is the availability of swing space needed during construction, and also the age of the facility and educational adequacy. If we were to do a, a renovation to this school, you know, can we really get it to where it needs to be in order to provide 21st century learning environments? And so, that question alone, in addition to the availability of swing space, really led to this flow chart. And so on your, just to orient you, the rest of the options will be formatted the same way, but since this is the first one, I'll take a little bit of time to explain what we're looking at. The flow chart to the left of your screen begins to illustrate how we will, how we could make this work to, and I can't stress enough, the goal here is to minimize student disruption. So how can we make these projects go with the least impact to our students? And so in blue, in the blue bubbles to the top of the flow chart really illustrate the consolidation of programs, followed by the order in which the projects could take place in order to make this happen. So we began with the construction of a new K5 on, on the Central Elementary School site, which means we would have to demolish Central Elementary School first. The Central Elementary School site, while yes, it is on a fairly large parcel that could theoretically accept a new school, has inherent site challenges. There are wetland issues identified on the site which prohibit the realized buildable area. And so we're frankly forced to build, build a new school around the same footprint of the current, of the current school. So we would demolish Central Elementary School, build a new K5 in its place, after which we are proposing to renovate Pathways Elementary School, and relocate our HCS students to the new Pathways, which will become our new year-round, and then do a comprehensive renovation to Orange Middle School. To the right of your screen, you're now seeing the highlighted schools, the highlighted projects based on the WOOPR study, that this project and this option begins to check off. So we would be providing a replacement school for Central Elementary School. We will be consolidating Hillsborough Elementary School theoretically. And then while the Hill, while the WOOPR study recommends a replacement of Orange Middle School, this is an important distinction to keep in mind as we go through these options, we will not be able to, in this option, fully replace Orange Middle School because of other programmatic challenges, the lack of swing space, so on and so forth. But we would be providing a renovation to Orange Middle School, and then obviously a renovation to Pathways Elementary School to get that property up to snuff for our relocated HCS students. And so this is just a conceptual illustration of what a new school on the Orange, on the Central Elementary School site could look like. To the left of your screen, you'll see the, the wetlands and the stream that runs through the site, and you can clearly see how that really reduces our buildable area. And then to the right of your screen, what a new footprint could look like, as well as modified site circulation, so that we can get adequate bus, bus and parent drop-off onto the site to get it off the street in order to improve transportation issues. And then pros of this site, we're consolidating two low-capacity elementary schools, we are addressing accessibility issues onsite, we are providing a much-needed renovation to Orange Middle School. Some of the cons is that we only eliminate one school from the OCS portfolio, and my colleague Steve will dive into that a little bit more later in the presentation. We have, there's a lack of swing space that could make an onsite replacement very, very challenging. Swing space challenges for Orange Middle School renovation, and then obviously the wetland issues on the site. So, now let's talk about option two, which is a new K5 on a greenfield site adjacent to the existing Gravely Hill Middle School. Considerations for this option is obviously land availability and educational suitability. There are, you know, it's not called Hillsborough for no reason. We are, there's a lot of topography in the county. And so on this site in particular, on the Greenfield site, there is topography that needs to be addressed. It can be addressed. It's just an important thing to note that it's there, and it does cost money to address site, site issues as such. The new transportation pattern and the possibility for redistricting in the '28, '29 school year are all things that we thought about as we were putting together this option. So, in this option, we would, because this is a, a greenfield new build, we can construct the school with no hindrance to operations elsewhere, so the new school would open. Because of some of the transportation issues, we are now proposing that instead of Hillsborough students going to Pathways because of the transportation that it would take to get students from up in that part of the county down to Gravely Hill, we are proposing that we renovate and bring up Central Elementary School to accommodate new Hillsborough Elementary School students, and then at the same time provide the same renovation to Orange, Orange Middle School. So in this option, you can see the projects that we are checking off from the WOOPR study. So it's four projects. We checked off four projects in the other option as well. And then in terms of site constraints, this is what we're looking at. So the existing Gravely Hill Middle School site goes unchanged, while we are adequately placing a new K5 on the adjacent county-owned parcel that's right next to the soccer complex. Pros and cons of this option, um, again, pros, it consolidates two low co- low-capacity elementary schools. Um, it also addresses accessibility issues, um, on the, uh, Central Elementary School site, which is, is gonna be through a renovation, and it also renovates, uh, Orange Middle School. Um, cons, again, it only eliminates one school from the OCS portfolio. Um, and just to remind everyone, the Woolport study recommended a consolidation of our schools, and so that's what we're really looking at here when we talk about, it only eliminates one school from, from OCS. Uh, we're still faced with the same swing space challenges. Um, and then again, this site, as central site, uh, also has some wetland issues, although the buildable area for this project, um, is slightly larger. So we feel like we can fit a new, um, a new K, K5 onsite without, uh, impeding any of the, uh, existing wetlands. And then last but not least, um, I wanna go through the onsite replacement at Orange Middle School, which would provide a new K8. Uh, considerations for this option would be, uh, we are providing a new elementary school, um, and appropriately sizing for a middle school. Uh, improved retention from elementary school to middle school is one of the inherent benefits of a K8, and we'll talk more about the benefits of a K8 here in, uh, one of the next slides. Uh, we're able to consolidate needs with one project, and Steve will come up and again, talk about, uh, the financial benefits, um, of, of these options here in a second. Uh, reduction of facility cost over time, phasing of construction, and then obviously, um, you all are familiar with this area, traffic is a huge concern. Um, so in these options, I wanna point out a couple key things. Uh, first would be the phasing. Um, what makes this option, um, uh, attractive is that we're able, we have enough space onsite to build a new K8 without disrupting the current, uh, schools. So Orange Middle School would be able to stay in operation, Orange High School would be able to stay in operation, while we build a new K8 adjacent to the middle school. And once that K8 is constructed, we will, we are proposing to demolish the existing Orange Middle School and use that regained land to rebuild our athletic fields. Um, and so there are a number of different benefits. We've done this, uh, many times before for other school districts, and it seems, um, to work very well. I mean, there is some, there are some growing pains with share and some coordination that needs to come for the years of construction to reallocate and, and share athletic, uh, facilities. But once that's over, uh, we're providing, uh, brand-new athletic fields, typically in a more efficient pattern, uh, than we had before. The other thing to note, if you can, you just, uh, zoom in on the existing plan, um, we were able to put arrows, uh, the yellow arrow represents bus access, but currently all of your arrows are off of Orange High School Road. Um, in the new plan, we are proposing to redistribute site entry points to disperse them on to four sides of the site. That's separating bus traffic from our student traffic, from our, um, from our parent and teacher traffic, to make the site a little more accessible and ease the traffic pains that, that this, this site currently, um, currently experiences. And so if we're going to our flow chart, um, as mentioned earlier, we are able to construct the new K8, uh, without disrupting, uh, any, uh, current site operations. Uh, we are proposing then to feed that K8 from the existing Orange Middle School students, as well as, uh, a combination of our Pathway students and our Central Elementary School students. Um, thus allowing us to, again, as in option one, renovate Pathways, uh, relocate our Hillsborough Elementary School sites to Path, and relocate our Hillsborough Elementary School students to Pathways. And in this project, we are, uh, for the most part, touching five projects. Um, we're, we're completing, we're checking, checking all four boxes in Phase 1, uh, and one school project in Phase 2, and also, um, uh, a transportation project as well. It's anticipated that because of the location, as you all know, the, uh, school bus facility is located on that site as well. So as a part of this project inherently, we would anticipate some improvement, uh, to that facility to make for that traffic inflow to the site a little more accessible. And then I just wanna touch really quickly on the general, uh, benefits of, of K8s. Uh, this is research done by the Department of Education, um, over many years and many K8s. Um, we're starting to see a number of them, um, pop up in school systems that we've been working with, uh, for a number of years. Um, they, they're, they're shown to reduce motivational decline in our students. They're shown to reduce academic decline, uh, when students transition, uh, to middle school. Um, they are shown to, uh, facilitate better preparation for high school. Uh, they foster a greater sense of community and stronger relationships among students and teachers. Um, and K8s tend to have higher attendance, fewer disciplinary issues, and higher overall academic achievement. And then pros and cons, um, in this option, we're able to remove two elementary schools from OCS inventory, which would be, uh, Central Elementary School and Hillsborough, which are a top priority for replacements, um, as again outlined in the Woolport study. Um, HCS students still move into a newer, um, and renovated Pathways. Um, and we address in this option, most of the recommendations from the Woolport study, uh, which we think is a fantastic, um, use of, use of funds. Uh, the more we can check off in one project or in one go, uh, the better. The, the, the con is the traffic concerns. Um, you know, there, there are still some lingering, uh, traffic concerns, but the team feels like we can work through those as, as the project progresses. So with that, I will turn it over to Steve to, uh, talk money.
Thank you. Hey, uh, good evening, everyone. Thank you for having me again. It's a pleasure to be here. I'm really, uh, have enjoyed working with KEI and Clark Nexon and Frederick and Patrick and his team, and, and also just folks around Orange County. Christina and Della helped with operational expenses. Uh, the folk, JR and Stephanie helped with bus ridership. Folks at, uh, GIS gave me maps within a day. Stormwater review, both of Hillsborough and Orange County have been, it's been a pleasure to work with you all. So thank you for having me here. So we, um, what I've done is, uh, I basically have done a, not a checks and balances, but a factors of analysis, just analyzing the different options, and we looked at, um, nine different factors overall. So, uh, to level set, the, the third scenario that we are, uh, looking at and describing today that the team's already described, basically all three options have parity. They affect in, improve facilities for approximately 1,700 students. They're improving 250,000 square feet, which is about 21% of the portfolio. So it's not just a K5 at Central, but it's also the Pathways renovation and Orange Middle School renovation. It's not just K8 at, uh, Orange, it's also the Pathways renovation. And similarly, the K5 at Gravely Hills is also Central Elementary School renovation and Orange Middle School renovation. And each option basically affects, again, 1,700 students and approximately 250, uh, 2,500 square feet. So out of the nine factors, we, uh, did a ranking. Basically, one is, uh, optimal, three is not optimal, and so the lower the score, the better. And it's, it's a kind of just, um, it's more of a conceptual study based on specific data and facts that we have gathered. So the first, uh, factor was alignment with Woolport study. And Orange K8, uh, ranked number one because it hit four of the five, uh, recommendations, uh, from Woolport. The other two scored two because they do hit, uh, four out of the five recommendations, but they fall short a little bit. Central was recommended to be a complete, um, uh, um, well, actually Central was, is a renovation, so that does hit. But the middle school, Orange Middle School is a renovation, and then, um, uh, the Gravely Hill, um, also has two renovations, so. Um, portfolio optimization, uh, one of the, the things that we were, heard were newer and fewer schools, fewer and newer schools. And Orange, uh, K8 solution reduces a portfolio by 18%. It, uh, at the end of the day, after we go through these scenarios, the overall portfolio would be reduced by 257,000 square feet. Central replacement reduces it by, uh, 5%, and Gravely Hill only reduces a portfolio by 2%. Um, that also then ties into the next slide, which is our operational expenses. So what we did is, uh, working again with Christina and Della, we came up with, uh, a dollar ninety-two per square foot. This is based on the operational expenses over the past five years. And this is only, uh, utilities and maintenance. It doesn't have to do with staff, custodial, or taxes, or anything like that. That's a, it's a little bit more of an in-depth, uh, analysis, but I think the factors would be the same. Basically, it's a, it's a, the benefit is the, the more you reduce your portfolio, the more you save. In over 10 years, the Orange K8 solution would save $6.6 million, which could be funneled back into, you know, programming and the benefit of the students. We looked at schedule, and, um, after putting this slide together, and, uh, I, I realized I should've just narrowed it down to years. So, um, basically, the Orange K8 is, uh, a four-year solution. Central replacement is a five-year solution, and, uh, Gravely Hill is a five-year solution. This is based on, um, the flow chart that, uh, Marcus had showed us earlier. And it's also based on being able to renovate, uh, Central Middle School in three phases. I, I try, kinda chose the middle of the road, choosing three phases. Once we were to, if we were to select a construction manager, they would, we would work with the architect and the construction manager to do a deeper dive. Three phases is affecting a lot of students in a large portion of Orange Middle School. We really may end up having to do it in four phases, which would add another year of impact to the students. Even if Orange Middle School is renovated over three years, there are gonna be students there who never go to middle school without a renovation process, you know? All right. Um, and then we looked at total project budget. And this was based on, um, the, the schools that we talked about, the areas of, of the schools that were affected, the square footages. And we used, um, I worked with four different contractors, uh, to come up with average square foot cost and brought them up to $2,027 through escalation. Escalation in construction is about 5% to 6%, it's twice typically what, um, uh, normal typical inflation is. And it's another important thing to think about. Um, the quicker we can, the more we can build quicker, the more money we will have to spend because ten, you know, a hundred and twenty-five dollar, a hundred and twenty-five million dollars stretched out over 10 years erodes at 5% a year. Um, anyway, came up with these numbers, uh, and then I divided the overall construction costs by students to come up with a metric of cost per student. And Orange K8 was a better investment because it was $80,000 per student as opposed to 91 for Gravely Hill, or 82 for, um, Central. And I was thinking, when I saw this number, $80,000 per student is a lot of money, right? I mean, that's a lot of money. But if you think about it over the course of the life of a school, 50 years, it nets out to be about $1,600 per student. Then we looked at risk, uh, basically cost and schedule. And, um, I've, I've spent most of my career doing renovations, uh, because a lot of times that's what clients and owners and myself at my house needed to do because of budget constraints. The challenges with renovations are, um, there's challenges with unforeseen conditions which increase your cost. You can't, um, accurately plan, uh, for a school. You have to have a higher contingency when you do a renovation. Uh, so basically, we're pushing the design team to decrease scope to have a contingency that may or may not get spent. And then the other factor is cost, um, or I'm sorry, schedule. You know, you don't, if you hit unforeseen conditions, you don't know how long that could impact schedule. Uh, generally, we don't miss our dates with schools because, you know, school starting date's very important. So what happens is if there's a schedule risk, we end up paying overtime to accommodate that. So that's why I, um, the rankings are the way they are. With the Orange K8 solution, uh, it's new construction for the K8. The renovation to Pathways in this scenario is an empty building. We don't have any swing students or anything, so there's less risk. Then with Central, we have to, we have the demolition, renovation to Pathways, and then renovation to Orange Middle School, which is an occupied school with three or four phases. So school traffic impact, I know this is a third rail, and I tried to approach it lightly. What I looked at, um, we are working with Stella and, and JR to try to get bus ridership and then translate back to, you know, actually how many carpool, how many folks carpool, um, short of doing a traffic impact analysis. Eventually, whatever scenario is chosen, we'll have a traffic impact analysis, but, uh, that's a higher investment that's quite not really worth it at this point. But, um, the factors that we looked at were, um, the, the size of the site for onsite queuing. Again, these schools were built 40 or 50 years ago, back when, uh, carpooling wasn't really a phenomenon, you know? Um, but, uh, Central, uh, we, I ranked Central the, the least favorable because there's only 15 acres, uh, and part of that is wetlands. So it's really hard to have onsite queuing at Central. Plus, its hay street is a smaller residential street with one point of access. Uh, Gravely Hill, I ranked, uh, second. Uh, there is, uh, West 10 Road, and you do have 40 to 50 acres to work with, but some, a lot of that is wetlands. Um, and then I ranked, uh, Orange K8 site as the priority because it's proximity to 70, the four points of access that Marcus had referenced. So, construction impact on students, we, we talk about, um, one of the, one of the things I wanted to talk about is with real estate and construction, you talk about the highest and best use of a building, um, how, you know, certain land and certain areas have, are better suited for different buildings. But we looked at highest and best use, but we're also thinking about the greatest good for the students. And this, this factor looks at the construction impact on students. So the Orange K8, uh, solution is the winner because, aside from the athletic fields and a construction fence around the new K8 building, no students are, have to walk through a construction site or, or get dropped off near a construction site. Um, Gravely Hill ranked second because, uh, Gravely Hill is new construction, but Central would be renovated, so students would have to move, uh, to Pathways or to another school. And then Orange Middle School renovation is, um, would be a phased renovation, so 600 students would be directly impacted by construction. And then the Central replacement, um, as you can see, 1,725. All the students that benefit from the construction would experience some kind of move or shift over one or two years of, um, their school life. So, um, the, the sum total of these nine factors, um, is presented here. And if you look at the, kinda, if you squint and see the red, you can see Gravely Hill's challenges are, you know, the portfolio optimization. I think it only reduces a portfolio by 2.5%, so that misses. So that misses the Woolpert idea of fewer, newer and fewer. Operational savings are reduced. And then the total project budget, it's the most expensive solution per student. And it only, it only benefits fifteen hundred students as opposed to some of the other factors. And then Central, the challenges with Central are the risk to cost and schedule due to the demolition of Central, Orange Middle School renovation and the Pathways renovation. Construction impact, seventeen hundred and twenty-five of the students are going to feel, you know, the pain of construction. And then the traffic, school traffic impact. So that's how we came up with the rankings. All right. Mr. Davis. Thank you all.
Thank you, Mr. Hess and to the design team. And so here we are with the summary of options. As you see outlined to the bottom of the three site plans, options, or the pros and cons, how they align with the report all the way down to the things that Mr. Hess has mentioned today. We will literally take these three options and put them in thirty-six by twenty-four sheets to provide from the April seventh through the ninth, feedback for community stakeholders. April seventh is the teacher work day, so we're looking at between the hours of eleven and, and two to cover that lunchtime where teachers may want to come to the Welcome Center to fully engage and help, you know, us flush out these options with their comments. And then on the eighth and the ninth, we'll have it at King Street in the conference room for those to come by between the hours of five and seven. We'll look at the hours that are more feasible for those who are getting off work to again, share their comments with us. Stated here for the April seventh. And our goal is by May fifth to engage in a approval and decision on the first priority project for the 2024 bond. With that, we'll take any questions you may have.
I'm going to start, if y'all don't mind. Mr. Davis, as you know, I'm very familiar with Orange Middle School and Orange High School. You've got on there entry point, Harold Latta Drive. That would mean coming all the way across Orange High School's property to get to Orange Middle School. Because Harold Latta Drive is on, is in the housing development over there, if I'm thinking correctly. So you're talking about coming all the way across the high school property to get to elementary, middle school.
Yes, so that slide that you're referring to, we, we, in conception, this would be for student drivers. So that would be entry to, as Mrs. Hess said, divert some of the traffic that you currently have flowing in one direction. So that arrow from that neighborhood would be the access for our student drivers that wouldn't intermingle from parent drop-off as well as staff coming in.
So they're including the, the arrows for both the high school and the middle school in the drawing?
Correct, yes, I apologize.
But at the same time, we're tearing up practice fields or ag barns or something that is coming across there where that road would be from what I'm seeing. And very close to the softball field and the baseball field existing at Orange High School.
Those may or may not be consequences of a master plan renewal. Yes, you are correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Atherton?
Well, first, I really appreciate the details and the thought and really trying to get us around kind of that second level detail and information. One of the things that jumped out to me when, when you're looking at the analysis of the project budget and for the Orange K eight, I, I'm a little surprised, to be blunt, that it is going to be cheaper to build that, tear down the old school, rebuild all the fields, do all of that cement and reconstruction than any of the others. It just seems, seems off to me than, you know, because when I looked at it without even thinking, I was like, oh, well, clearly, the Gravely Hill is the cheapest because you've got your cement, you've got a new building. But then here, we've got to deconstruct a building. We've got to re, I mean, not even talking about having to go and grade all of that so you can build those. So, I mean, I just want to make sure we're giving the right data out on, on it and being fair on it. I mean, that's just the one that stuck out to me as, seems like there's a little more money in that one than the other options. But I really appreciate the detail in all of the areas that were broken down and trying to think of this holistically.
That's a great question, and I can see how that could be confusing. But let me try to break it down this way. We have a hundred and twenty-five million. We stayed, said that we want to achieve all of these things within that a hundred and twenty-five million. And so, yes, you are correct. Building new will be more expensive than renovating. However, as Mr. Hess and some of the design teams have said, you won't have any money left based on the timeframe and the construction dollars in 2026 versus in the pattern of just doing the K five in 2028 to do anything to much-needed improvements to Orange Middle. And so while, yes, the upfront costs are more expensive with the K eight, in long term, you want to make sure that you're able to establish efficiency in the monies that are available. Because we don't want to come back four or five years from now, and there's only ten million left, and Orange Middle renovations are four, forty million dollars. Then we've not taken advantage of the money that we had in 2026, is what Mr. Hess was saying. So it's different ways to look at costs over time. The initial cost, yes, would be more expensive for a K eight than a K five. But if you look over the lifespan of this investment, and the K eight, as Mr. Hess identified, was a better efficiency use of the funding.
Yeah, maybe, maybe the way, maybe to present this slightly different from what I heard you say is looking past the factor of just building. You're looking at, hey, I have to do a renovation of the middle school, but I'm accomplishing that by doing this. And that will offset some of the other costs that would be in here. Because the way, the way it looks, if you just read it and even hearing it, it sounds like, oh, you know, you're building this, or building this, and these are the flat costs versus you're saying, oh, this is actually, this one is actually a different investment than the others because you're addressing it. And where like Gravely, you would have to build the school, plus you still need to renovate Orange Middle. And so that, that makes a lot of sense. And I think, you know, for people that aren't here, whenever y'all are sharing this information, it just helps to give some more context. So thank you for that explanation.
Will do.
Ms. Doyle?
Thank you. I also appreciate the layers of detail and the approach going through the different options. I, I, I didn't land where y'all landed. And I also don't like some of the domino effect. Like, I think some of, you know, because when I look at the overall ranking, I just, I don't, I don't agree that Orange K eight is all these ones, like the traffic impact. But it's because of the other movements of school populations that were connected to the Orange K eight. Because, you know, I was a parent who drove to Orange Middle and High School for ten years, and it is really bad. Like, I, I can't imagine adding another school population there. So I just, I can't believe that the school traffic impact is a one or the construction impact is a one. That's just, but again, it's a one because of the school movements that were connected with that option, in my opinion. So to me, the obvious choice would be building the Greenfield site, the K five, near Gravely. You know, no, no one has to be moved or relocated. Rebuild Central and then let Central kids, you know, get their school back. And then by that point, have, you know, move Eflin Cheek kids to Gravely Hill, have that, have those adjacent communities and maybe foster some of those benefits of a K eight by having the K five and the middle school they directly feed into, like, on adjacent. And by that point, you'd have, you know, Eflin Cheeks available for, you know, a year-round school. It actually has trailers and room for growth. You could expand into a sixth grade, try out the beginnings of a middle school. So anyway, I, I, I just did not stick with the conclusions just based on my own, you know, feelings and experiences in this district. And, and I'm also just concerned about how, how different elementary populations got relocated. I, I wasn't feeling good about, you know, like, Pathways is just this nor, you know, kids are coming in from far out in the county. My kids went there. And so like relocating all those kids in different ways, you know, I just, there, there are concerns I have about how different groups of student bodies were, were potentially relocated. But I, I just, to me, I just can't land with the Orange K eight. I just see it as a problem. I'm, I'm just not convinced, so that's where I am.
Ms. Molly?
Yeah, I want to thank you and the whole team for just the deliberate detail and evaluation of the different criteria. It was helpful to hear you all voice that over because I did, I saw all the ones, and I was like, not on traffic, you know, certainly not on tra- I think that's, it's not a one on traffic. But it was a very thoughtful presentation. The concerns about the Central site are ones I think we've talked about for years. So I'm like, that does not seem like a viable option to me. But I think the other two seem more viable. And I understand why the criteria led you to the K eight. A couple of things I wanted to raise around this. So in that model, OCS would have eleven schools rather than thirteen schools? Is that right? We'd close two schools?
That is correct.
Okay. And sort of the populations of three, four schools would have a brand-new building, essentially? Like, like the students from Pathways and Central who currently go to OMS, the students who are currently at OMS, and the, the River Park students who go to OMS would also continue to go to-
Not getting into details, but if that was the option, we would look at transportation, child nutrition, and, and see based on where those actual students reside, which students, again, we want to keep our eighty-five percent capacity rating for efficiency. So short answer is, we're not really clear on the number of households that would move. But yes, potentially in a redistricting, those in that radius could potentially move to this K eight school, yes.
Okay, but the idea would be like, students from current Central and Pathways would go to school in this building-
That's correct.
-through middle school. And the current OMS students, which also includes students from River Park, most of the students from, not all-
Correct.
-would, would join them for the middle school?
At middle school, yes. If that is their home-based school currently, they would still go to that middle school, yes.
Okay, I'm curious like how often in the world that happens, where you have a cohort of kids and then you bring in these other kids. I just, a couple of other things I wanted to flag, like Woolpert's report, as far as I know, only recommended downsizing OCS by one school. Like, I know this fewer newer schools thing is a thing, but I, it only recommended downsizing by one. Downsizing by two elementary schools, which is functionally what this does, like, it makes me pretty concerned about the capacity because elementary school is where we're much closer than middle school. So I didn't, I didn't know, I know the capacity would be like twelve seventy-five. I wasn't sure how much elementary capacity would be there of that number and like what that would do to our old, closing HES and Central's buildings would lower elementary capacity by nine hundred and seventy-one pupils-ish, I think. And I don't know how, I, I imagine there aren't that many seats planned in the new school, so.
Yeah, so in the new facility, again, that's starting to get to programming. But we plan to design and construct a building that provides the same number of students that will be displaced from Central and Pathways with a ten to fifteen percent capacity growth for both the elementary side and the middle side. And so I think what we recommended is a total of about twelve hundred students in, in totality that will be on that side.
I think it's, it's more the, because we're closing those two facilities, like, the Pathways facility wouldn't be closed, right? It will have the capacity that it has, or maybe bigger if they renovate it. But if we're closing the Hillsborough facility and Central facility, those have a total capacity physically, I think of nine hundred and seventy-one. I was like adding up the columns, so that might not be quite right. I'm just worried, are we going to get too close to the hundred percent for elementary school in this model? So I'm seeing no. But I, it's, it's a, it's a question I have, and it's, it's something I'd love to have more information about. I, I am a little concerned because, because a couple of years ago, maybe, the board received a presentation where, you know, we had projections, long-term projections about how many students we'd have in the district. And at one point, the projections we were getting said like, I don't know, five years out or so, given growth in the county, that we were about to go over a hundred percent elementary school capacity. So if this leads to less elementary school capacity, I have a, I just need to understand more about whether those projections were wrong or how this all kind of works out in terms of our total projected. I have other questions, but I'm going to pause and let other people ask questions.
Yeah, thank you for this, thank you for the analysis. Very interesting, creative, thoughtful stuff in here. I, it's funny, I land in a different place. I land with, you know, the, the, so just to talk about the K eight, that is a very big school. There, you know, and I, and it is just a very big school. It's bigger than our high, and we, our high schools aren't even that big at this point. Just curious, I've not even seen that. But, you know, one of the things that people love about, about our schools is the intimacy. So we had been talking, I think Woolpert was talking about maybe a six hundred student elementary school. We're at thirteen hundred students, that's pretty big. And so there's a, the, the mathematics, it's, it's a little silver bullet-y to me. It's like, oh, here's a, let's just put one school in and it solves all the problems. So a little worried about that. And the basic question Sarah raises is enrollment, you know? And you saw it, you know, every time I see like our census data and the growth in the community and schools, you know, Rhonda just showed us that in the last ten years or, you know, we've lost over a thousand students. And that doesn't count the students that are in private school or, or homeschooling. So in fact, our enrollment numbers are, are headed down. And I don't know if you looked at our middle school enrollment, our middle schools are really seriously under-enrolled. And, and as Sarah said, you know, we're kind of at, you know, first, we had to build a new middle school, a new elementary school, and now maybe we don't. And that we haven't talked about what pre-K looks like or any of those things. The models are flawed, we're trying to get to better models. But we don't really know, we don't have a baseline that we can work with. So, so there's a question about what is the enrollment? And what are we projecting, or what does that look like? We've heard for the last two meetings, but actually for the last, since I've been on the board and before, this question about K eight year-round. And I love that the Central parents came out and said, K eight year-round in a bigger way, not one school that serves a select population, but is K, where does K eight fit in our programming? And then how does that affect these decisions? I am, have been, I've been pretty vocal about Gravely. I'm, I'm not crazy about the location because it's in the middle of an industrial center that's becoming more and more industrial. And I think our, if we're looking at a couple of student, a couple of schools, replacing a couple of schools in Hillsborough, I'm not sure how I feel about sending those kids to Eflin. It's not that far, but it feels like, it's like a whole nother world. And I wonder if we should be trying to keep the Hillsborough kids in Hillsborough. And even for the reason of, of, you know, there's a question about strategically, and this is fantasy maybe, but to what extent does this project help us attract more people to our schools? I am not sure, you know, this kind of, oh, we've got to get as much done for the hundred and twenty-five million dollars. This is just one bond. There will be more bonds in the future. We have, this is a process, and we're just trying to do as much as we can. So we're taking a step strategically towards a future vision. So I, I don't feel quite as compelled that we have to fit everything in. Whereas my mother would say, you can't get blood from a stone, right? It's just so much money that we, there's so much we can do. But I don't want to get into unnatural solutions because we feel like there's a financial risk. But I don't want to get into unnatural solutions because we feel like there's a financial risk. And then on, just on the community sessions, it would, to me, it would make a difference if these community sessions were hosted in the communities that are impacted. That's not here, that's not King Street, but at Central, at HES, at Orange Middle, at, at Pathway. So that the people that we're talking about, who we're going to affect them, they should really, while parents coming in for a teacher meeting or dropping off their kid, let them come in and see what we're thinking about. But I would really like to hear a lot more from the public on this. I have more, I'll, I'll stop there.
Mr. Atherton?
Well, one other, one other thing that I had a wondering on is on the gravelly hill option. You know, we talk about roadway and access and concerns about that. And we do have that soccer.com in the middle. You know, my wondering is, have y'all considered putting a roadway behind soccer.com? That actually would connect the two schools to make it accessible without having to go on the main street and allow those students or families to propagate back that way without having to go out, turn on it, go back around soccer.com. And I think that would potentially alleviate some of the traffic concerns on there as well. I do have to say, I'm also concerned with the traffic on, for the K eight, especially given, you know, been there way more than 10 years and every year we get multiple emails about what can we do? We engage the DOT and the DOT says, love to hear your ideas. And yet we have the same traffic every year. And now we're talking about increasing that. And we also have to think about that the elementary is going to also have plays and music and there's going to be sports running there at the same time. And so it's not going to be just in the morning. You're going to have afternoon activities as well. So I think we should be realistic on what that looks like as we talk to the communities. And I do agree, you know, we should engage and the pathways and others, so they're aware of this and nobody's surprised however we do that to notify them. That way we get good feedback on these options because this is a big decision for our community and I definitely want to hear from everyone about it. Thank you.
Yeah, I would just like to add on the community engagement piece. We've already, we've presented options to principals and talked through with them. Just to, I think they took a brief survey just to give us their initial thoughts. So we'll look into getting into that. Our plan is not just to have, we want to have community engagement at some neutral sites as well. But as we start preparing information for us, we're going to send those out to principals to share with their individual communities and so that they can participate in the surveys and understand where things are happening. There may be some opportunities as well to put some of the boards, if we get additional boards that can go up in some of the impacted schools and those can stay there a little bit longer past the few days that we planned. I think there's a QR code. We plan on putting things out on the website so that there are multiple options for people to participate. Part of the reason, we saw really good survey responses, the first round. Our in-person, we received, there were 25 people in total for the two evenings. And so it seems as if our community prefers to at least be, to, to hear their voice. We don't want to limit to just certain locations. So I think we're going to do a little bit of all of it. And if folks have questions, like I said, we, we will equip principals. They can reach out to us as well. But we can look at, put in some additional poster boards in those schools that will be impacted the most. But this is also a community. It's not just about the schools that are being impacted. I mean, it was $125 million bond that folks, you know, participated in and agreed to, to have. So it is important to have some input from all, all schools. So we plan on doing that.
So I, the only other thing, Dr. Jones, on that is, you know, since COVID, a lot of people are not physically going in the school to drop off their kids. So I don't know the poster boards inside would be that effective, but I mean, I don't know if outside would be better, but I'm just thinking about that. That was what big transitions that we've seen is, you know, drop your kids and go. And unless they're in the school for a purpose, I, I'm just worried about the effectiveness. It's just kind of the back of my mind.
Well, at this time of year, anything you could put outside, because you've got baseball, softball, lacrosse and soccer probably going on at schools and parents will be coming for those. That would hit a large population of parents.
Yeah, and I think, you know, for the central locations or the, the neutral locations, we wanted to have staff present to be able to answer questions. So I feel like that's important if, you know, because sometimes you can look at a poster and not quite understand everything. And we wanted to make sure we had interpreters on site there for those time periods. So we plan to do that. This is a good point about folks not coming in to drop off. So I really think we're going to reach families when we send information out through the schools with a way for them to provide feedback. I think that's going to be our most, we'll see the most respondents there.
As you just have the poster boards at a school, how do you communicate that we're going to move your kids to pathways? Or we're going to move your kids to a different, how do you communicate to people what is going to happen to their child by looking at a poster board? I just don't see how that happens.
Yep, so I mean, that's just something that was thrown out based on Mr. Atherton's question. The other piece that we plan to do is the segment of the presentation for the bond. We plan on sending that out to our families as well. So we know that this, the team presented this evening so that they have that segment so that they can go in and watch it, hear your questions, hear the team's proposals, and then we will be responding to questions as well. We will be available onsite for families and community members on the days that are set.
Ms. Molly?
Okay, so just a few other things. One is the renovation for pathways. I found it surprising that that would be a school that would be prioritized for renovation because it's only 25 years old and it has one of the lower facility condition indexes in the Woolport report. So like New Hope, River Park, like they both have much higher facilities condition indexes. And so I, you know, pathways is sort of, I'm sure it has renovation needs, but it's a lovely school to be in and it has like a lot of light and, you know. So I don't know if there's more to say about that renovation and why the, why the school would be prioritized for renovation, but it's not in our worst condition.
And that renovation has not been stated on what would happen. And so if you think about the time, it'll be 2028. And even though I wish I had a fortune teller, we don't know the status of pathways. And so to state.
It may have needs and things, okay.
But it has not been quantified of how much money will be needed to have pathways ready to receive Hillsborough elementary students. So that's why it's in there because we may have to do some outfit to get it ready, but it may be minimal.
Okay, okay. And then just some other things. So the elementary capacity I mentioned is a concern. A couple of other smaller things about the K eight project. Overall, like I appreciate like the number of students who would get to experience a brand new building and a lot of the considerations that are in here. Just from this drawing, it looks like there would be far less parking than there is available right now to just a middle school. And this would be more than double as many kids, I think. And so I think the parking needs to look different than in this proposal. I'm concerned about, and I, all of this is answerable, the athletics in the meantime, right? If you're building on the athletic fields, what are the teams doing? Where are they practicing and playing? And then also if you build this new school and put the students in it and then you start to demolish Orange Middle School, which is a very old building and probably has some hazardous materials that are safe and encapsulated now, but get exposed in that process and you have students, like how, how do you sort of handle that? I don't need an answer for that. I'm sure y'all are experts in school construction, so I'm sure there is an answer for it. I just wanted to name it as a thing that as a parent I would want to know. And then the last is I saw that the budget was like $147 million or something like that. And so the bond is for 125. So I'm not sure how that works if it's one building.
We will work with the county on our cash flow. That's why it's important for us to be efficient in the decisions that we make because it's not a finite amount of money. And so the cost is the cost in construction dollars today. The Woolport report, as well as the preparation for the bond happened in 2023. And so those numbers are not going to ever align because we're just dealing with present numbers. If, as we stated before, we continue this process, 141 million next month, maybe 150. And so what we do know is the current dollars are the current dollars. Anytime, as Mr. Hess has stated, we belabor that, it will go up. Economists are not seeing a 2008 where we could get 10 projects done for 125. They're seeing it continue to escalate. As Mr. Hess said, 5% is a lot of money. And so we just want to make sure that you have all the information so that you understand that this, while I would hope that the county will continue a bond referendum on a consistent basis. Your last bond was in 2016 and it's now 2024. And so if that is the litmus for you to understand the urgency in this, I hope you keep that in mind.
I'll, I'll just add to that, our schools aren't getting younger, right? We still have a lot of old schools that need replacement. I wonder if you looked at the option of, of that K eight being smaller, especially given, you know, like making it a 800 or 900 student campus instead of a.
If you would.
Possibly adding another school if, depending on what happens with our enrollment in five or six years.
If, I would like to bring Ms. Francis up. Clark Nix has done some work on K eights and maybe she could answer some questions.
Yeah, I was asking more about, it's really more of a capacity question rather than build such a big school to build one and then stagger build another one later. Go ahead, yeah, I'd love to.
We built K eights in several different ways. One way to build a K eight is to take for each class that you have in that school, you know, each grade level, if that's 100 students, then you would continue that in the junior high or middle school levels. Okay, sorry, I came to junior high here. That word is on my mind. But, so that's one way to do it and that keeps it smaller. But since we're looking at replacing Orange Middle School, we need to think beyond that kind of capacity model. So that, that is why we're proposing that it would, would be able to have the elementary numbers of whatever we decide is the right size for that. And then we would increase that and draw from other districts. And we've heard that there are advantages and disadvantages to that. But, but it could be a positive thing in, in helping kids with that transition from middle school to high school. Does that answer?
Well, kind of, I'm really asking more, you know, so we're, I, I don't know, it is about 60% enrollment capacity in our middle schools. It's, it's, the percentage is really low. So I just don't know if we could replace Orange Middle with a much smaller school. And instead of building, you know, just a big school has me, it's a little, it's a lot, it's a, it's a very, very big campus. And there's risks about putting all, everything in one place. And would, you know, so I'm just asking if you considered making that a smaller school and then staggering it and, and maybe it overlaps into the next bond by building a second K eight, you know, in five. I'm just making, I'm making it up. It's just, I'm a little worried about the size of the school.
I mean, those are good options. I mean, we kind of looked at the options, you know, as, you know, they were presented to kind of deal with the issues in the Woolport report.
I don't think we can talk about the next bond because that's not us. That is the Board of County Commissioners. So I think we have to stick with the 125 million we have right now. And, and what we have to decide and think about, I don't think we can go higher. But I think Mr. Richmond has some things he wanted to talk about.
Yeah, thank you for all your hard work for this and putting this presentation together. And I really do appreciate the idea of a new K eight at Orange Middle. But I will say, being a traffic person, having worked traffic at Orange Middle, and then you've heard this before, I do see major traffic concerns, especially it being a K eight. You know, there's going to be a lot of parents wanting to see their children off to school, driving them to school. So even now, we see a lot of traffic coming in off of Holman Drive. And that's a major concern because I hear that from my mom who lives right there on Holman Drive at the corner almost every day. So I do see a concern there. And folks thinking that would be an easier route to come in and park at that little parking lot there near the soccer field. So, you know, that's just something to consider. And Holman Drive and 86, you know, as Mr. Hess said earlier, the school wasn't built for this traffic that we're seeing now. So there's no light there at that intersection of Holman and 86. And there's been a number of traffic accidents there. You got buses trying to get there. So traffic could back up all the way to the school in the afternoons during that time. And as Sarah mentioned earlier too, the sharing of the athletic fields, I'm sure would be a huge concern. And a lot of parents being upset about having to share those fields with, you know, with other, other schools or with Orange Middle during the time that their children are supposed to play, so.
Thank you, Mr. Richmond. Any, anybody else, Ms. Padilla?
I just want to say thank you. I know it's a lot of work, a lot of hours, and I'm also learning with you. So I want to say that I appreciate and, and I look forward to hearing what the community has to say. And we just have to be flexible. Rome was not built in a day, so we just have to be a little flexible and be open-minded with every, all the balls in the air. Thank you.
Yeah, just, we didn't have a lot of people comment on the, the central rebuild. The, I see how the design is to get the traffic onsite and loop it to capture as many cars as you can. But I do know the community there, I think even if they don't have kids, they would have some input on those very narrow roads having the volume, even though they may not be parked on that street. It's just that volume going through that area because it is, it's really tight in that area. So just as we think about getting feedback, you know, from families, we may want to get feedback from those communities that will be impacted with the larger volumes to get their thoughts as well and just make sure we're being thoughtful. Thank you.
Did we look at the option of building a new, especially if we're going to abandon, repurpose, I think is the word, repurpose two schools? Did we look at the option of building a school on a greenfield site in town or right outside of town? Is that something that we looked at?
Yes, we started the conversation of what was in our existing portfolio, availability of land. And then we also looked at a greenfield site. And I think in one of the meetings is either Mr. Hess or myself. Because time is established in terms of the money, we felt that the bond money to secure a site in real estate would not be a good efficient of use. And so that's why buying real estate was taken off of the viable options from our understanding from direction from the board.
Okay, I don't remember, I don't remember.
All right, we are at 10 o'clock. Do I, does anybody have anything else that they need to add tonight?
No.
Okay, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn. Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank y'all very much and thank you, Mr. Davis, with your team.